Good evening and welcome to the August 22nd, 2023, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee.
I'm sorry, we're muted.
We're gonna restart in a second.
Sorry about that. Is that what you?
Yeah, you're muted.
Oh, oh, you saw that? Very nice.
We're good now. Yes? Okay. Welcome back again to the Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we have no correspondence for this evening. There is a recommended motion related to approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the July 18, 2023, school committee meeting as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
There we go. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And nobody else off the line, right? Okay. And yes, for me. All right, we have another motion related to the approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the August 8, 2023, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second!
There we go. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much. Visitor comments. If we have any visitors who would like to speak up, you are welcome to raise a hand or turn a camera on. I think we just have one visitor online. All right, seeing no comments, we will move to school committee announcements and recognitions. Do any school committee members have announcements or recognitions? Mary?
Just wishing everyone a great start to the school year and thanks for all of the work that's done behind the scenes over the summer to get ready for the school year.
All right, wonderful. Anything else? All right, seeing no others. We have no business with guests. We're gonna move into administrative reports. School committee chair report. I'll start by welcoming our new student representative for this year. Andrew Maderos is joining us. Would you like to take a minute and tell everybody?
Yes, sure.
A little intro?
I'm Andrew Maderos. I'm a rising junior at Long Meadow High School. I run cross-country and indoor track and outdoor track. I'm in a variety of clubs, key club, red cross club. And then I've also been on the LA test, school council, freshman and sophomore year. So it's kind of a step up for me, I would say. So yeah, I'm really excited to work with you guys and learn more about how this works in the coming months. And I'm really excited for a great year.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, a few other reminders. Reminder number one. All elected officials need to complete the conflict of interest training that was sent in an email from the town clerk, Tim Donnelly, on August 3rd. If you have not done that, please do so ASAP. If you do not have the email for some reason, either let Diana or myself know, and we'll make sure that we get you sorted out there. Also, a reminder about the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference. Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendent's Conference that's coming up on November 8th through November 10th. If any of the school committee members are interested, there's still time to sign up. So make sure you touch base with Diane and she'll help coordinate that. We were talking also about subcommittee meetings. I know we had one of our subcommittees today with policy, so that's awesome. And I would like us to also get meetings for curriculum subcommittee and evaluation subcommittee on the books for September. So if you're on that subcommittee, keep an eye out, one of those subcommittees, keep an eye out for an email to coordinate some possible September dates so we can hit the ground running. And then last but not least, the beginning of the school year is upon us. That also kicks off what I like to refer to as goals season. Lots of goals headed our way. So last year, we did our goals by starting out with the building administrators and doing a tour of each of the schools and then coming together to sit down with the administration and discuss sort of what the district goals were and how we can support the work that they're doing and also what we want our own goals to be as a school committee. So if that's something that we are interested in doing again this year, that seemed to be appreciated last year. I like the opportunity to check out some of the schools in person. So tentatively, one of our, maybe late September or first October, we could do it previously to a meeting. Look at your calendars and we'll be in touch with some possible dates. Possibly the afternoon of the 26th, I think, is our late September meeting. If that works, pencil that in as a possibility and we'll find out availability from the administration and all of us and see if we can find a time and date that works for everybody to get together and decide on our goals for this year. All right, any questions on any of those things? Okay, I think that's it for me. Other than to also say thank you to all of the educators who are already back in their rooms and all of the educators who are already back in offices. And thank you to all of those who are returning on Thursday. And we wish you a happy start to the new year. All right, we're headed into superintendent's report. You're up.
We are, we are ready to roll with the, we have a new staff orientation scheduled for tomorrow. And we are going to welcome back all school year staff on Thursday. So we have a convocation in the auditorium. I know our committee members have day jobs that make it difficult, but if you happen to be available and you want to swing by the school auditorium at 8 o'clock, we'd love to have you. The full convocation will last about an hour and 15 minutes and then from there, we'll break off into more differentiated options for staff. So looking forward to welcoming everyone on Thursday. Just a shout out to all the folks who work behind the scenes to get us ready. The tech staff, the clerical staff, custodial staff, maintenance staff, who, you know, work so quietly to get our classrooms and our offices ready. So we're most appreciative to them and we're ready to open the doors to about 2,800 students next week. So it should be great. Few things you'll hear from some of our directors shortly, but a couple items that might be of interest or notable to the committee or the community. You may be, you've seen some construction going on just outside our doors here at the intersection of Bliss and Blueberry Hill Road. That construction is being fueled by a Safe Roots to Schools grant or our participation, I should say, in the Safe Roots to School program. Looking at a sidewalk extending from grassy gutter to the entrance of our campus. There'll be a, an improved walkway serving our, the campus here out to Russell Field and then a bike lane that will run adjacent to the sidewalk on Blueberry Hill Road. So we don't anticipate that that will create any delays or disruption, although we don't know exactly when some of the last concrete will be poured as part of that project. So we'll notify families if, if there are any delays that we would anticipate. So really appreciative that the DPW has worked closely with the Long Meadow Police to make that happen. It'll, it'll make that congested area that much safer for students and pedestrians and bikers and cars. So it's great. The school building committee has been active. More specifically, a subcommittee of the school building committee has begun to review the firms that submitted bids to serve as our owner's project manager through the feasibility stage at the very least. And so that selection subcommittee is meeting tomorrow evening. They'll bring a recommendation to the full middle school building committee next week. And then that recommendation, that selection that we make locally is reviewed by the MSBA in very early October. So we hope that by very early October, we will have an OPM onboard as our first partner in the feasibility study. So that's exciting news. The Williams Middle School principal search is underway. I'm really grateful for the 10 folks that came together as part of a screening committee. We were here about four hours last night and we have whittled the applicant field down to two finalists. I need to just touch base with those individuals. But I expect that tomorrow morning, we will identify those two finalists for that Williams Middle School principalship. Two great candidates. I feel really good about where, where things stand. It's, it's candidly difficult to search for an administrator at the end of the summer, but we're fortunate to have two super candidates that will have an opportunity, that the community staff will have an opportunity to meet and greet those finalists in the days ahead. The universal free lunch has been renewed for the coming school year, which that universal free lunch program has driven participation up in our lunch program. So we're grateful for that. And if you have any questions on that, I'm sure Mr. Mazza can, can fill us in. But that's good news as it heightens participation, heightens revenue and revenue that ultimately gets turned back into, into our program, the lunch program. So I think though, one more thing that we're really excited about. Included in your packet, a informational flyer on MIA's Unified Basketball Program. So kudos to Athletic Director Mike Capitasto for pursuing this. We will be able to field a unified basketball team this fall. It's a, it's a program that unites students with disabilities with, with their peers in, in a competitive way. In this case, basketball. We'll have a season that will run from September through the middle of November and it concludes with a really cool jamboree. The program is underwritten and done in partnership with Special Olympics. So we're really excited to offer that as a way to be more inclusive in our athletic program. So grateful to the high school administration for, for ambitiously pursuing this. It's, it's a great option for, for more kids to be included in our athletic program. So that's it.
Any questions or comments related to other post reports? All right, seeing none. We are headed into other administrative reports and we've got a few of them lined up today. We have Ms. Suzanne Bertrand, our Assistant Superintendent for Learning, with us. We also have our Director of Special Education, Ms. Nicole Paris-Crowe, and our Director of Student and Family Support, Ms. Nilda Irzari, all here with us today.
All right.
Do you want to?
Come on up.
Show everybody started with their reports.
Come up as a team and
Come on up.
We will, I guess we'll kick it off with Sue, who has been working closely with, with Nilda and Nicole. And Sue has, together, they, they've been really the principal architects of some of the professional development that will kick off the school year. So I'm grateful for their collaboration and their thoughtful pursuit of district goals via that professional development program. So, so you want to kick us off?
Sure.
Anything that?
Yeah, it's definitely been great to have partners in prime for this year. It's been wonderful. And Nilda has pretty much the first day and I'm sure you're gonna talk more about it, but it's all about FTL stuff. And so I started to call it Nil Day, but she's
It's a panel of experts in equity, inclusion, social, emotional, mental health. So they're going to be there to answer some really specific questions for educators to set them up for success. That's why I didn't want it called Nil Day.
I'll go through quick. I've tried to align things with our district goals. And as I like went over those district goals, I was pretty excited to see that we have checked the multitude of them off and we are, we have very few left to go. So I know we're going to engage in dip writing soon. Maybe after October would be a great time for that. But so I'm, we're well on our way. We're getting ready for that anyway. So aligning our practice with multi-tiered systems of support, a shout out to our elementary principals, especially who have spent a ton of summertime aligning the MTSS process for referral and they're working hard on that and getting ready to roll that out at the start of the school year. Along with that, we have a new data person in our IT department, Thomas. And he has worked hard to explore data platforms for us so that we can easily kind of push a button and have data at our fingertips. We haven't been able to have that yet. He's got some pretty good expertise and he can build some programs out for us from the ground up. And he's also looking at probably in purchase, that would probably be a lot quicker to install. I'm pretty excited about our MTSS math academy. We got into, we wrote, it's almost like a grant and we were picked for a three-year opportunity to take part in training in Advantage Math Recovery, AVMR. If anybody knows that, it's really the platinum version of math instruction for students with deficits for sure, but we can use it on the acceleration side too. And we had our initial meeting a couple weeks ago and we get basically 30 credits a year. And each course, at least at the lower level, is one credit. So we can, we can train 30 teachers this year in the course one or course two. We've already trained quite a few in this district with past grants, but we're looking to get everybody trained. And then we can train our own champions or train the trainers. That's a pretty rigorous endeavor. And so I'm not sure we have anybody who's able to take that on right now because it's a lot of time out of their classroom. So we can also use the 30 tokens in that way. And so it's pretty cool. It's like they gave us a bunch of money, but it's really in chips. But we're looking forward to having some folks trained as soon as possible with that. Under designing high-quality instruction based on UDL, we had summer curriculum going on all summer. It was pretty busy around here. I think over 70 working groups on summer curriculum, most of them designing curriculum with UDL in mind. So that was great to see. The projects are rolling in now. Our summer enrichment has been over for about a month now. I can't believe how fast things go. But we had about 22 different subjects for students to come in and enjoy. As usual, it felt like the favorite was the long metal robotics because the, because the students at high school and middle school come and work with the elementary students and the robot was out in the
Hallway of the high school.
Chopping stuff up and playing ball. So that was pretty cool to watch. We're rolling out our PGC or Professional Growth Courses. That's by teachers for teachers. We have lots of proposals, probably close to 30 for this year coming up. So folks will be lining up to sign up for that and it's usually a competition. We have to set the date and time for release of the signup link for like 4 o'clock at night when everybody's home and it's like a concert ticket, almost as good as Taylor Swift. Yeah.
I think she is.
We're planning PD for literacy at elementary. Based on the summary report from our literacy review. We don't, our initial report is still in draft form, but we'll share that with you as soon as we get the final copy. So we're looking forward to that. And then developing a broader, renewed and widely shared vision of student success. This is really Marty's, but I thought I'd talk about it. Anyway, it's your competency-based kind of trial. We're trying in a couple different places in the district, one at the high school, with grading on mastery as opposed to stand, you know, traditional grading. So feel free to jump in, Marty, but yeah. The internship program at the high school is going to be looking at it, we're hoping, from a VOG perspective. And then we have a science teacher at Glenbrook, who is always the first to try new things, Sam Novak, who is actually looking to grade on the science standards, on a mastery base, so.
Yes, it's, it really relates to encouraging students to think about developing their own learning portfolio, their own learning record. And so it's an opportunity for us to learn what that can look like and how it can be used to really promote authentic learning, authentic assessment for students and to drive relevancy and engagement. So it will be a learning year in terms of how kids, teachers, use that learning record to demonstrate teaching and learning. So looking forward to it.
Yep. Middle school STEAM is expanding this year. We planned, we used the same curriculum for 7th and 8th last year as it was our first year for STEAM. And the 8th graders hadn't had it yet, so we combined the 9th grade. And our middle school STEAM teachers spent a good part of the summer planning for a new 8th grade curriculum for STEAM. So they are 6th, 7th and 8th ready now to go at middle school. And just generally in our office, we are working on teacher licensure, making sure our new staff has the appropriate licenses and with the emergency contingencies for educators. The commissioner, I felt like he thought he was going to make it easier for folks to get their second year of emergency license, but if you teach special education or ELL, it is not easier, Nicole. So we've been working hard to get staff their second year of that emergency license and they're working hard too.
Yeah.
So the MECA program is full. We brought all of our students on. Thank you, Nilda, for the help with that. We had two slots at the 9th grade and we ran through every student that was in the lottery in the 9th grade and we could only find one. So the other students were not wanting to come to Long Meadow, but one was a basketball player and she got into Central.
And one was interested in the vocations and they were able to get into Putnam, so.
So we are shy one from the, that you approved and they don't have anymore to send. There were no more students in the lottery, so. That's that. If you want to grapple with that next time. New employee day tomorrow. Marty already talked about that. We're looking at the, all the grants. We're in the process of writing the grants. Nicole's got a couple too that she has to write. We switched platforms. We didn't switch. We have the old one and we have the new one. So we're working in two different platforms for grants and that's a pretty big endeavor based on the learning that we've done on it so far. And then we're doing our darnest to partner with BayPath on things like professional development and potentially thinking about what courses our students might be able to take part in over there. So we've had ongoing meetings with members of the BayPath staff to talk about that. But we can talk about that more as we get more involved. But they're on the pan, somebody from BayPath is on the panel.
Right.
Right? Which is great.
All right, wonderful. Did you guys have stuff you wanted to add? Should we pause? Okay, why don't we pause? We'll go over some of the things you said and then we can give you guys a chance to add on and expand onto those questions or comments. Dive in.
Sounds like you guys are doing a great job. Thank you. That's a lot.
Um, go ahead, sorry.
All right, I do have a couple things.
Yep.
So when we think about standards-based, like grading for mastery, are we thinking of moving that up maybe to the middle school? Is that what I was hearing? Okay.
At some point, I mean, you know, we, I think we were pretty gung-ho about it before COVID came on. We had PD lined up for that March PD day when we were gonna be out of school for two weeks for COVID. And we weren't able to pull it off after that with our reduced, reduced PD days after that. So yeah, that's one of the plans is to roll our standards base up. And then look at it in an elementary for making it a little more robust, especially in certain subject areas, so.
So for this year, it's trialing in the high school across all departments, just in?
There's, and the vocational teacher is taking one trial on, which is, I think, a great place to, you know, think about that. And she's thinking about it within the VOG competencies?
Yeah.
The internship.
The internship. What did I say?
Vocational.
Sorry, internship.
Can do it.
Yeah, thank you. And the science at 7th grade in, at Glenbrook. And she's looking at the science standard specifically.
Thank you.
And just to add, part of what Sue mentioned with the data tracking systems, that'll make it easier for us to track standards-based achievement K5 and see which standards students are excelling in, which standards are they achieving. And then it'll help us audit our curriculum and then potentially move it up to the middle school to see what standards we're focusing on the most.
Yes.
Did you have another question?
I do.
Go ahead.
So for the literacy review, do you know when it will not be in draft form anymore?
I'm hoping By the end of this week?
Okay.
Yeah. I'm hoping to have, we're hoping to have an executive summary by tomorrow.
Great.
That doesn't mean the full report is ready to come out in full, yeah.
So could we put that on the curriculum subcommittee agenda? And I'd love to hear more about the PD that you're planning related to that.
Okay.
Great. Wonderful. And one more thing?
Yep, no, go ahead.
I was just wondering more about the BayPath professional development. Have we partnered with them before and we're expanding that or is that a new endeavor?
We started to partner with them a little more right before COVID again. I forgot the person's name, Marty, who was in that position and they had a
We had
They had a department that kind of folded.
Yeah. We had at the time a special programs committee that, this was sort of before the, the closed coalition was pulled together. And so that special programs committee created family and parent engagement presentations and brought in speakers. And so BayPath was on that special programs committee and they helped us identify speakers that would be of interest to the community. And, and they also had invited our parent community to some of their public presentations as well.
And our faculty too joined them for some really good presentations. And
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've committed to invite them when they feel like something's pertinent. Send some of their students over here, things like that, so.
Yeah, they've been, they've been great partners and Nicole can speak to this better than I, but they've been great partners with providing us with student teachers in, in related service areas, so.
It's been a great partnership with them. I kind of jumped on and seeked them out when I came, came onboard over here in January and they've been wonderful to work with. We have a few students, actually masters-level students that are in their programs that are working with us either as teachers or paraprofessionals or in another support capacity. So it's, it's been great.
And OTRs?
Yeah, OTRs, yes. We have field, field students that are working with our occupational therapists as well. So it's, it's been a great partnership so far.
Thank you.
And when you mentioned possibility of courses for our students also, would that be in connection with early college credits? Would that be related to internships, a little bit of?
A little bit of, a little bit of both potentially. There's a grant out there that funds some college tuition for students and our partners are looking into it. They're not sure the Long Meadow will qualify for it. It's probably a needs-based funding, so I don't know that we will, but they're looking into it for us to allow staff students kind of head over there. It's hard with our high school schedule to do that, but they could take a night class or, you know, Saturday school. BayPath is loaded with Saturday programs, so.
We talk broadly, we're not sure frankly what will materialize, but we talk broadly about reciprocity agreements and, you know, agreements where, you know, students are taking classes here that are potentially recognized by BayPath in, in the application process. So there's, there's some opportunities there.
Other questions or comments? Did either of you, anything else you'd like to expand on more? Tell us a little bit more about any of the programs that Sue mentioned.
They each have their own individual, individual reports as well.
Ah, no spoilers.
Sue did a really great job.
Nicole, you want to go next?
Sure, sure. They might have slides.
So I try to keep them to a minimum per Dr. Shays' reminder. So just a
Go ahead. As you, just as you launch, I'll, I'll just pull up the slide.
Okay. So just a few things that I wanted to just give you guys some updates on. So first of all, it's great to see everyone. Thank you. It's welcome for.
Thank you.
Sure. So I know school hasn't started yet, but there's a few updates, special ed-related updates that I wanted to sort of share with you guys. So just sort of a guiding principle for special education, you know, we're trying to, trying to remain, to stay, providing students a free and appropriate education and services are provided to the students in a least restrictive environment. So just reminders that are staples in special education. We have several programs that I'm sure you probably are familiar with, have heard over the years mentioned, and I just wanted to sort of reiterate them to you. So our preschool, we have our integrated program for itinerant, itinerant services in ABA classrooms for discrete trial teaching for preschool students located at our Wolf Swamp Elementary School. We also have our LINK program, which is a Long Meadow Integrated Inclusion Classroom, which is partial inclusion program that is K through 8. So it's at our elementary schools and our middle school. I also wanted to remind you all that we have an LLD program, which is for language-based learning disabilities, that is at elementary and middle. And we have a PALS program that is at the middle school level and our life skills program that's here at the high school. So we are looking to expand on our programming. These are our programs that we've had for years. We're looking to rebuild and build their foundations, provide more instructional support in our programs and branch out a little bit. We'd like to explore some more programming at the high school level and really look for, to support our 18 to 22-year-old population, our transition population. So that's some of what we're looking to do this year. Rebuild foundations and integrate more direct instruction and look to our 18 to 22-year-old population. So then when it comes to special education staffing and programming updates, we have some updates. We have a retirement that happened, let's see, well, June 30th is when it started. However, Gail Levy, beloved, Gail Levy has retired. She's been with us here in Long Meadow Public Schools for 16 years. It's been educator for She's been with us here in Long Meadow Public Schools for sixteen years. It's been educator for almost thirty-eight years at, uh, the, every level, including college. So, she retired officially June thirtieth, but however, she has been with us this summer, really helping to transition, um, transition students and families that were reluctant to see her go and transition staff and help onboard some new staff that's going to be with us to help, uh, take over some of her responsibilities. So, uh, families will be getting an email letter from me, um, within the next couple of days, just letting everyone know officially that she's retired. And we've all talked about this. I spoke with families and she has as well, but just sort of an official thank you to Gail. Really happy for her because she'll get to enjoy her grandchildren and her children, but we're sad to see her go. So, in Gail's place, we have recently hired a new special ed supervisor, Christine Corbett, who will be starting with us, well, tomorrow. She'll be at the new employee, um, orientation. She comes to us from East Long Meadow with a lot of experience from pre-K all the way up to, uh, transition age students. She has been an ETL in East Long Meadow. She's been a special educator in East Long Meadow and Holyoke. So, we're looking to have her come onboard and help us out, um, with those supervisory roles. Then we also have professional development in the works. We are going to continue to have, uh, this year, have teachers become Orin Gillingham certified in our reading specialists and, um, reading specialties, seeing stars and visualizing and verbalizing, um, zones of regulation for some more behavioral or, um, helping to, students to regulate. We're going to have our BCBAs in our RBTs provide some school-based trainings because we have our behavioral teams that we put in place last year and we're going to have them do really school-specific supports and training and strategies throughout the year as well. Just a glimpse of some of the things we have on the horizon. We've recently added a transitional education coach. Um, we have a program or Westfield State University has a program for some students that are the eighteen to twenty-two year, um, years old to participate in college-level classes and, um, participate in the, uh, college experience. Students that have been in the life skills program, for example, that have, may or may not have passed, uh, may or may not have passed MCAS or earned a diploma. They have an opportunity to participate in what's called the MACI program. So, I will share more information with you about that in the next few weeks. We have a student that's going to be participating in that program and we've hired a transitional education coach to help not only this particular student, but other students that are coming up in the next couple of, uh, next year that will be transitioning as well into a similar experience. So, we're working on building a transition program, a little teaspoon at a time. Um, then over on our vacancy side, um, hiring in education, some of your educators is not easy. Our newly graduates, newly graduated college students are not all clamoring to become educators, unfortunately, shockingly. I don't know what they're going to do with their time. They're not headed into education. Um, so we're struggling like other districts in, in finding, um, staff to fill these positions. So, we currently have one elementary school position, uh, a special ed elementary school position at Center School. We have a middle school special ed position at Glenbrook that's still open. Uh, we have an RBT position district-wide that we're looking to fill. We have a nurse position. We're looking for an SLP, a speech and language pathologist. We're looking for paraprofessionals at all levels and, um, special education tutors as well. And the special education tutor position is a little new-ish to us. Um, we had a position, position similar to this last year that we, um, that we created due to our struggles with finding staff, finding, um, certified teachers, having certified teachers apply for positions and really having the need to support our students, especially in our programs, with providing them the direct instruction and, um, the specialized support that they need. So, we find ourselves in a similar position. We're looking to provide an additional layer of direct specialized instruction to our students in our programs and at the, each of the elementary levels, each elementary school. So, we're not, it's a budget-neutral position, so that's a good thing, right? Um, we are going to use the money that we haven't used when we have, due to the fact that we haven't been able to fill these positions that we've had open, these support staff positions we have had open for about two and a half years now. We are going to allocate, reallocate that money to these tutor positions. So, that is something that's new and on the horizon for us. Then, opportunities. So, we have a lot of things in the works. Um, we are looking to, for, to expand our district programming, as I mentioned. We're looking to increase our inclusion support, so least restrictive at all, at all costs, right? Uh, to provide some more inclusion support, so getting our general ed and our special ed staff collaborating more, finding time in these really tricky schedules, especially the elementary school schedule, finding them collaboration time so that they can co-plan and co-treat, um, and co-teach our students, more time in the classroom. We're looking to expand our professional development opportunities, consultations and coaching for special education, general education staff, finding opportunities for them to get, um, training and consultation times with outside service providers or in some of the professional development I spoke of earlier so that they can, um, you know, work collaboratively and cohesively as they always have, but providing a few different avenues and, um, creative opportunities for them. And to provide local programming for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old students, so really looking for them to be able to stay in the community that they've grown up in here. Um, having them participate in Long Meadow High School opportunities as well and integrating them into our local communities. And then the higher educational partnership that Sue and I sort of spoke briefly on and Marty on, with BayPath. So, we've also reached out to some other colleges as well. Um, I know we have some related service staff that are college professors at AIC, for example. And so, there's, there's a lot of opportunities on the horizon for us. That is it for me, but I'll take any questions you might have.
Did we mention the, the PD we have lined up for paraprofessionals, um?
Sure. Let me, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Um, we've talked about, I think a little bit earlier to the end of school, but we've lined up the National Youth Mental Health, um, First Aid for our paras in seeing, working with kids in grades for one through twelve. And, um, that's through close community and a grant, um, from CES to collaborate, the collaborative for educational services in, um, North Hampton. They're sending a couple trainers down. So, our paras will do a pretty intensive two-day training in that. And, um, close community partners with St. Andrew's Church. And so, they're providing space for us to do that PD over there. So, it will get parents away from everyone else. That'll be great for them. And they're providing them lunch, even more important.
That'd be wonderful. And also a quick shout-out to SEAL, um, our, uh, special ed, uh, alliance group of people. They are wonderful. They, uh, we haven't set a date. Pardon my phone. I'm so sorry. Just ignore it. Um, they are in the works of putting together some wonderful programming for our families. And I'm actually meeting with them at the end of this week to talk about what we're going to set up for our monthly programs. Um, it has been on Tuesdays and Wednesday nights, so we're going to pick a date for that as well. And we're looking to be in person and not just, uh, remote this year, so that's, that's going to be wonderful. I think that they're also putting together a little meet and greet amongst the families themselves, um, at Bliss Park right before school starts or right after school starts. So, that's going to be wonderful. Some more, more to come from them. And I believe our SEAL representative is Michaela. Wonderful. Any, uh, any questions? Yes, hey, Jamie.
Questions, Jamie?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments and questions. Number one, congratulations to Gail and Elliot. Amazing family of Long Meadow. She gave more time to this district than many, so she's amazing and her family's amazing. So, good for her. Um, I think it's awesome. Um, I guess just on your first slide, the programs, is there one you're like focused in on? I think you said it. I might just missed what you were saying, that you think is a big hole in our programs or something.
Uh, I kind of focus a little bit on everything. I would say you asked, so I think I spoke about all of them maybe.
Yeah.
Our life skills program, maybe that's what you're referring to.
You were thinking about adding some. Is there, like, you said we might expand on the programs?
Oh, we might expand on, expand on the programs.
The existing programs.
These existing programs.
I thought you were saying there was another one coming.
So, there might be an expansion of a transition program for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds. Uh, that's not going to be quite this year. We're sort of in the infancy stages of being thoughtful about how to do that. Um, so I think that when expanding means maybe not, not just this year, but gathering information, making informed decisions and being really thoughtful of how we move forward, but also really looking at the current programs we have with our current student population and building the foundations in order to really support them at where they are and to keep them in district.
Okay. And then just my last follow, is there one more?
I have a follow-up on your question.
Okay. Just as a follow-up, no, yeah. So, on these schools that we're reaching out to, um, what is our process to reach out to them? I mean, many, many of the people in town are, run the programs of AIC, Winnick, Westfield State. You know, pretty much, I, I, you know, there's a lot of them that run or even, you know, I think there's even a provost in town as well. And superintendent, athletic director of UMass, you know, all these people live in town. Are we reaching out to them or are we going to?
Familiar with everyone in towns, uh, you know, jobs necessarily, so, um, I haven't, I haven't reached out to them specifically.
Just randomly, how do we go about it?
Yeah, so BayPath, for example, I've received my master's degree from there. Um, I have been in contact with various professors. I've met a lot of our teachers and related service providers have come from BayPath programs. We have some paraprofessionals that we're looking to take courses, so that's really what got my wheels turning and it's right here in our backyard.
Okay.
Um, AIC again, it was more through, um, professional connections.
Okay.
Our physical therapist is a professor there. I've known people that have, I know people that teach there and it was really through those connections.
Okay.
Really, it was just something I kind of asked Marty about when I first came on board and said, can I reach out? And he was very, um, supportive of that, but I'm definitely open to hearing other, you know, gaining more connections of people I should be reaching out to. So, please.
I definitely think there are, yeah, we can connect after.
Yeah, I'd love to hear.
I think there's many more that are in the local, because I think once you expand beyond that, it's a little difficult.
Sure.
But the AIC, the Winnick, Springfield College, there's, there's a significant amount of folks in town.
Yes, I would love to connect.
So, I think that would definitely help and depending on what area, you know, of, of, you know, what, what we're trying to add to our curriculum or exposure to the students. Okay.
I, I would love to. I would love to get our students into the community, learning about jobs, learning about, um, educational opportunities, knowing that sky's the limit for all of them. Absolutely. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Can you speak to what is the current programming for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old, um, population?
Yeah, so we have, currently we, we partner with other districts, with LPVAC primarily, and they support our eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds' population in various capacities. Um, we, we don't have a large group at one time of that particular age span. So, you know, as students come up, we really look at their individual needs and their, their visions. You know, their vision, their family's vision for them and develop individualized opportunities for them.
Okay.
And then we revisit it every year.
So, how would that work then for expanding programming here in town?
We have a group that's coming up.
Oh, okay.
That's a little bit, um, more, larger than one or two.
Okay.
And it's a good handful that we've been with them since elementary school and we've been preparing incrementally for this.
That makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, feedback?
What nursing services are you guys looking for with this vacancy that, um, you have this specific to the special education program?
Yeah, so we are looking for a one-to-one nurse.
But, uh, I mean, is this a nurse who has any special training in special education, uh, LPN, BSN, RN?
It would be an RN.
RN, okay.
And I'm happy to talk to you about it if you have some more thoughts you'd like to share. Sure.
All right. Other thoughts, questions? All right. Thank you very much. It's great to hear all the things that are going on in each of the departments.
And I'll share more updates probably, you know, the next couple of weeks or month or so.
Perfect.
All right, great.
And now, Nancy, what?
I'm Nilda Erizari, the Director of Student and Family Support. The reason why I'm sharing the title again is because it's a new role and I met one of our lovely parents at Blueberry Hill and I told her, hi, I'm Nilda Erizari, the Director of Student and Family Support. And she kindly asked, okay, so what is that? So, I think part of, um, my work is when I present to the school committee is really articulating the role, not only for the school committee, but for our community and our educators as well. Um, I hope to have a really strong presence on the website that's currently, um, in the works. Um, but underneath that page, I would certainly have some of the goals that I hope to, um, accomplish in the areas of bullying, social-emotional learning, diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, I work with our wellness department. Um, so part of today's reporting is on our social-emotional, um, work that we've done in Long Meadow. And this work started before I arrived, um, in my role. And I just want to thank Assistant Superintendent Sue Bertrand, who started the work with a committee that was represented by educators from every school and administrators from every school in Long Meadow. It was also in partnership with DESI, um, the Department of Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, so some of the work that was already done is we did an audit of our existing programs. And what was promising is that we have a lot of supports already in place for students academically, behaviorally, uh, and socially emotionally. So, in your packets, you'll have, I hope, a flyer that has, um, the report. Our hope is to share this with our community and including our educators and families so they can see the systems that we have in place to support students. The committee examined and documented our multi-tiered systems of support regarding academic, social, emotional and behavioral learning across the district. I'm going to share a few highlights of that work and then articulate our next level of work as we move forward. Um, but really the primary goal is to increase a sense of belonging for all students so that they can access high expectations and they could do their best learning. Um, so we have a thriving and well-communicated vision of the graduate. Um, in the competencies for the vision of the graduate are some social-emotional skills that are required of our students. Um, so for example, in order to be independent, you have to be self-aware. In order to be collaborative, you have to be socially aware. And those are all social-emotional competencies that are aligned, um, with CASL, which is the Collaborative for Academic, Social and Emotional Learning. Um, so in essence, we believe that students have skills that help them work together and maintain supportive relationships. And Forbes Magazine reported that the top skills that they would like all graduates to have are, um, social-emotional learning skills, that they have emotional intelligence to work on the problems that haven't even been invented yet. Um, so our graduates are facing some compelling, um, problems that we didn't think about when we were going to school. They're dealing with artificial intelligence. They're dealing with new pandemics. Um, and so it all requires them to think about, how can I work together with others and leverage their talents and combine them with my own? That I respect multiple perspectives along my learning journey. Um, so you will see some of the tiered supports that are already in place in Long Meadow. Um, we partner with families. We invite them into our school community when their children are potentially struggling with learning. Educators use strategies to support students in their classrooms. Um, our wellness department goes through mental health awareness, bullying and healthy relationships curriculum. When students struggle, we examine the strategies that are needed. Um, our counselors and our classroom teachers, um, come up with comprehensive support plans to ensure that all students can be successful. We leverage family engagement strategies, not just within our school, but beyond if students are in need of extended mental health supports. Um, so that is essentially an overview of our current practices. Then we have a few action steps and goals, um, that our committee focused on, on the year ahead. Um, so for this upcoming school year, we're focused on adult professional learning in the areas of social and emotional learning. And what that looks like is classroom teachers are now going to ask themselves questions as they audit their own teaching and learning practices. Some of the questions they might ask themselves, are all voices heard in my classroom, is everyone participating? Are students being challenged to the best of their abilities? Um, when social-emotional, um, competencies are in a teacher or educator's mind, they start to see every student as a unique individual that possesses strengths and talents that they bring to their learning. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Um, another question that an educator might ask themselves is, what are the norms and shared expectations for collaboration so that every student has an entry, easy entry into a collaborative experience is? What are the resources that I'm helping my students see in the classroom? Are they representative of all the identities that we see? Are there resources that serve as windows to other experiences so that we are exposing our students to the very best of resources that mirror the world around them? And then for our administrators, our counselors, our mental health staff, they're going to be asking themselves questions. Can we make students more aware of how their behaviors impact the larger community? And when harm is done to the community, we know that consequences are important. But even more important is helping students understand how to repair and restore balance in the community and restore harm. And then are we teaching students to self-regulate, to help them be more self-aware of how their behaviors impact others? So this year, in addition to that adult, social emotional learning and professional learning, we're also going to continue to examine some programs. We are examining Yale Ruler out of New Haven, including Second Step as a Tier Two program. We're looking at these as potential resources to support our educators, but we know that we have to have a deeper look into that and we hope to partner with the school committee in some of those choices. Lastly, we're going to look into systems of restorative work at the admin level, including at our counselor level. So when students are challenged with behavior, we have ways to support them in our school community so that they can access learning at the right time. I think I've covered the majority of this document. There are goals for 2024, the twenty-five school year, where we hope to have a comprehensive and cohesive K-eight social emotional learning program that looks very similar. We want to expand it to the high school level, but starting K-eight, I think, is a great framework. And then really adopting the restorative practices aligned with DESI's rethinking discipline. And they passed many different pieces of guidance on restorative work in schools.
All right, wonderful, thank you very much. Questions, comments and/or feedback of any kind?
Um, this is incredible. It seems very large. I, I don't know how you get a handle on this because it's such a big vision. How do you define the metrics of success in these programs as you're, you know, working towards this twenty-four, twenty-five goal?
Yeah, I think, I had a conversation with a representative from CASL, which is the Collaborative Academic, Social, Emotional Learning. I'm trying my best not to use acronyms for.
It's a great acronym though.
So I did have a conversation about our adult learning this year. They recommended having a pre and post survey for our educators with some indicators. So at first, the indicators might sound like, I believe that my administration has given me quality professional learning on social emotional competencies. I know how to create a classroom with a strong sense of belonging. I feel I have tools to regulate myself. Because I think educators, as you heard from Nicole, are feeling burnt out as well. And their school community, they're, more and more, they're being tasked with so much. And the job of an educator is vast, the needs of students are diverse. And oftentimes, they feel as if, can I do it all? So one of the statements in our pre-survey might be, I feel like I have resources in my school building to manage my emotions when I'm feeling frustrated. I have someone to go to. Or that would be a pre-survey and then a post-survey would serve as a metric after the social emotional piece. Other metrics on the student's side would be things like a reduction in discipline referrals, an increase of family engagement strategies when a student engages in maladaptive behaviors, getting the families to come in and say, how, how can we partner with you to help your child be more successful? So we should see some metrics shift in that area. In terms of the mental health piece, we should see a reduction in at-risk reports if we are properly supporting students, especially the stressors that are there at the high school level. We have a high achieving student body and those pressures can get to every individual student. So maybe looking at some of the mental health metrics at the high school level and seeing how many of our students are accessing the supports from our adjustment counselors, our counselors. So I think the data points, we have to decide as a district which pieces of data we want to use to serve as our indicators of success. I will hopefully launch this committee this upcoming year. And the committee will then start articulating which data points we want to use as our metrics and then we would certainly report back to the school committee on that.
That's great, yeah, that's, that's, I was just curious and that's fantastic, both the student and the teacher perspective. That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Other questions, Mary?
Thank you so much for such a comprehensive overview. I was just thinking about the K-through-eight SCL programming and that selection process. And I think one of the things that's interesting about publishers is that, you know, sometimes they might create a program that's K-through-twelve or the K-through-five is appropriate for the needs of a district, but the six through twelve is really more cohesive. I, I guess, I know the focus is K-through-eight, but I would encourage some thought to be put into what would be the, the, how would that lead potentially in future years into that nine through twelve if you're purchasing curriculum?
Absolutely, I agree with you a hundred percent. So I think the selection process was comprehensive and Sue was part of it. So the committee looked at several social emotional programs. And then we met with representatives of those programs. And then we also met with practitioners that executed Ruler and Second Step within their respective schools. So we were able to see how it unfolded in their districts. Most of the districts do have a comprehensive K-twelve social emotional learning program. I think right now our focus is K-eight, but it's certainly, it's not exclusive. We do want to expand it to ninth and to upgrade, or nine through twelve. Especially because we have structures that already support that. The high school is doing some social emotional work in their connect blocks. They had a committee this summer and I was really excited about the work that they were doing. There were high school students working with the assistant principal to design some advisory or connect advisories that will extend throughout the year. They're student-led, interest-based, and they really respond to some of the needs of the students. So one of the advisories is about stress management. Another one of the advisories is really like gearing up for what's ahead and goal-setting and planning. So I do know that the high school is thinking about social emotional learning. I think the caveat would be they really want to turn it over to students because we know our students can do so much. So I think they want that partnership with students when they design these advisories.
Look at that, I think one of the strengths of the Ruler approach, and I use the word approach, you know, purposely, is it, it, I think it, it does have application K-twelve in the sense that it really focuses on, Nilda has far more expertise in this than I do, but it focuses on norms and values and expectations across the school community. So I think it, it certainly could, if that is the direction that we go, it certainly would lend itself to a nine-twelve adoption, for sure.
And does the Second Step not go?
Second Step, it, it does meet all of the tiered pieces. But for me, Second Step oftentimes has lessons that are targeted to student needs. So for example, one of the Second Step lessons is on apologizing. For me, as a child, my parents always taught me to apologize and sometimes I can apologize and not mean it. So a blanket lesson for everyone on apologizing may not be best, what's best for our Long Meadow students. However, if we know that we have a specific student that struggles taking accountability and apologizing, an adjustment counselor or school counselor can pull out the Second Step lesson and use it to coach that student through why apologizing matters, why owning your behavior matters, why restoring that relationship with that other person is really important. But not everyone would need that lesson on apologizing. So our hope is to use Second Step at the Tier Two level or Tier Three level, depending on which support staff. And currently, there are special education teachers that have used Second Step lessons to coach students.
Adjustment counselors, SLPs and special education teachers have used Second Step for a few years now.
Like we heard from our counselors last year, as, as they were kind of getting more into, being, becoming more involved in the restorative work that we're involved with, we heard from them that they would benefit from the types of explicit lessons that Second Step offered.
Well, I look forward to hearing more about this one. I'm, I'm guessing we're going to hear plenty more about the SCL curriculum pilot as we head into curriculum meetings also for subcommittee. Look forward to hearing that process. Is, what, what month is the pilot beginning right away?
The pilot is not beginning this year. So our hope is to train educators before we start placing some of the lessons on students so that this year, our hope is to train an implementation team potentially and show them the Ruler training and possibly start crafting out the lessons. And then the following year, we'll have an implementation cycle. But sometimes if you implement too quickly, you don't implement well. It's, it's so important for all of us to understand the purpose of social emotional learning in our district, to understand how these programs fit into each unique school community, their existing structures, to inform our community about some of the upcoming lessons and resources that we hope to use. And certainly to include the school committee prior to the student-facing implementation.
Okay. All right, wonderful, other questions, Mary?
Ruler is the one that we've got, the one that we've selected to move forward?
We would hope to have the school committee sort of approve that work once you're, you know, presented with. So that you would know more about it before we, you know, give it the stamp of approval, am I right, Marty?
Yeah, and, and we have some additional exploration to do with staff who would be closely involved with this, including our administrative team, so.
All right, other questions? Thank you very much. Very thorough, lots going on. It's been a busy summer from the looks of it. I appreciate the time everybody took to come on in tonight and share and look forward to seeing each of you at future meetings and subcommittee meetings, et cetera, so we can continue to find out more about what's going on. Thank you. Other thoughts, feedback before we move forward? All right, seeing none, we are headed into Student Representative Report. Welcome again.
Thank you. So just something quick, because obviously Sue hasn't even started yet. But last Tuesday, August, what was that, the fifteenth, I believe, we had a student leader meeting at Long Meadow High School. And we discussed, and it was with all the student leaders from across the high school. So, you know, your class presidents, your class vice presidents. And we also have our new class representatives, which there are four per class. And those are kind, and that's supposed to kind of help assist our class presidents and class vice presidents in running your class events. Like for example, if you come into the high school a lot of mornings during the school year, during the school year, you'll see our class president selling, you know, sophomore semi-tickets. And that takes a lot of time out of the morning, they have to be there early to sell those tickets. And that also takes away from time to do meetings. So what those representatives are supposed to do is kind of sort of help assist those, those leaders and just so that there can be more effective work being done between all of those class officers together. And it just, it's supposed to kind of streamline and have more people involved in student government. So we discussed that, so, so those people are there. And we also discussed our upcoming events to start the school year, which LHS will be doing. LHS, what is it, it's, it's like, sorry, I forget the name of it, but it's a class fair, where you can, a club fair, my apologies. And all the clubs kind of come together and present their club. It's, it's sometime in early September, it's a Thursday night right before the first football game. And if, and you can kind of do a scavenger hunt around to go to all these different clubs. And if you complete the scavenger hunt, then I believe you, yeah, you get a free football ticket to the first game. So that's an exciting event that we're planning. And then in early November, LHS will also be hosting the WMASC Fall Conference, which is, stands for Western Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. Last year, I went to the Fall Conference at East Hampton High School. And you do all sorts of workshops on sort of, oh, how do I describe it? Just in terms of what you do in certain leadership positions and what you need to do in leadership styles, those sort of situations. So there's a subcommittee that's being formed in order to help plan for that event in early November. And it will take place, the majority of it will take place in the auditorium. So that's an exciting event that we planned. So yeah, there's a lot of discussion on what the expectations are for student leaders, just being good role models. Also, Mrs. Rollick asked us to help make sure that the cafeteria is cleaner because that's been an issue in the past couple of years that I've been here at least. So she also asked to do that. We also were provided with free breakfast. So it was only about an hour-long meeting, but we kind of discussed our plan for the fall and a lot of it is including that WMASC conference, which will include somewhere around ten school, schools from across Western Mass, they'll come here. And there'll be a presentation in the auditorium and then we'll do workshops as well. And students here can help in running workshops too. So yeah, I'm, I'm hoping I get to run a workshop, I'm really excited about the conference. I think it'll be a lot of fun, a lot of interesting information. I've had a lot of fun at the East, at the East Hampton Conference in the fall. So yeah, I think it's going to be very effective and I'm excited we get to host it. So yeah, that's about it for me.
All right, thank you for reporting. That's exciting, glad Long Meadow High gets to host the conferences here. Good luck with that. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Andrew? All right, welcome aboard again.
Thank you. Excellent report, thank you.
Well done. All right, other reports, LPVAC?
We meet tomorrow.
All right, wonderful, we'll look forward to hearing next time. Energy and Sustainability?
There was kind of a get-to-know-everybody meeting earlier in the month. And I was just talking to Andrea, it looks like we're going to have another meeting in the next two weeks. And after that, we'll probably have some initiatives we'll be bringing by.
Wonderful, thank you. And Seal?
I was just in contact with them and we're setting up our first meeting as Nicole was talking about, the schedule hasn't been set yet.
Wonderful, all right, look forward to hearing more from each of those as we continue on. Finance sub has no report, policy subcommittee meeting met prior to this meeting. Do you guys have a chair for policy sub?
Yes, it's me.
There you go, all right.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah, I'm very excited about it. So we met and discussed some policies that need to be reviewed. And we decided to not, to review some more. We're going to talk to the lawyer about the public participation committee meetings and get some more, answer some questions. And then we also talked about a bullying policy that needs to be updated. And we're also going to wait until the next member of our subcommittee to meet and review, review that before we bring it to the school committee.
Okay, so both of these policies, if I'm remembering correctly, are based on changes to state law?
Yeah, public participation needs review and revision based on some Supreme Court rulings, mass state Supreme Court rulings. And so the subcommittee asked some good questions that we thought it would be best just to sit down with our council and review those, those questions before it's, so we need another bite at the apple on that, on that public participation policy that we received some advice from our attorney on.
Okay, so that's meeting again at some point in September and we'll hear about it later in the month, possibly.
The, so the JEDFB is the Bullying Prevention Policy Committee's encouraged to take a look at that. The, the subcommittee felt that it would be best just to wait until the full committee was, subcommittee was assembled just to bring that forward to the full committee. So there was a third, there was a third policy relating to school councils. Would you like me to hit that, Michaela?
Oh, sure, yeah, go for it.
So in your, in your packet, the, the subcommittee reviewed policies, Those are three policies that govern the work of school councils. So the. So the Mass Association of School Committees has recommended consolidating those three policies into two policies. So for your consideration is the adoption of policies, BDFA and BDFA-dash-E, as designated by the Mass Association of School Committees. And so the subcommittee reviewed that and was, I believe, recommending that the full committee adopt that. That doesn't require any action tonight, it would simply go out for public comment, is that correct? Does the committee need to vote to put it out to public comment?
Like, I don't see that one.
Did it not, did it not make the full committee packet?
It wasn't, that's why, it wasn't on here.
I'm sorry, okay. So we'll have to, we'll have to bring it back to your next meeting. All right, we'll bring that back to the next full committee meeting.
Thank you so much for coming by, yes, please do not feel that you need to stay with, enjoy your evenings. We look forward to seeing you again.
If anybody has any questions on that, the school council policies, it gets a little arcane and confusing. I'm happy to address or answer any questions you might have on that.
And is Policy sub going to make a recommendation on that one, or?
They already did, but I think in fairness to the full committee, we want to make sure that the full committee has all the documents.
The first reading wasn't on this agenda.
Got you, okay, sorry about that.
Okay, so next, we'll come back to it.
So just to note that we need to schedule another meeting at a time, wonderful.
All right, anything else from Policy sub?
Nope.
All right, wonderful, nothing from curriculum right now, or eval, and those will be meeting in September. We have no other ongoing or new business and no executive session planned, which I think brings us to one final motion.
I move that the school committee adjourn the August 22, 2023, school committee meeting.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, Adam?
Yeah.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
And yes, for me as well, thank you, and good evening. We look forward to seeing everyone again in early September, and have a wonderful start to the new school year.